All right, Mark is now recording. So these are, these are our near future plans. I think that what we want to do is we want to be really prepared for the fall. And we also just recognize this has been, this has been a pretty challenging season. And so there's a little bit of what we want to do in the coming month or so is take a little bit of rest to be prepared for what we have got coming up in the fall. I know, I don't know, Mark maybe you'd say it a little differently, but I'd say my anxiety is a little bit up thinking about trying to get everything up and running for the fall. And, and so taking a little bit of a breather right now while it's not quite as busy is, is going to be helpful to us. So here's during July, we're going to do what we did last year. I don't, I don't remember. I think we did it in August last year, if I remember right. Maybe it was July. Was it July? We're going to go back and forth with each campus hosting worship. So when, when one of the campuses hosts worship, the other campus will not be doing anything with worship other than joining that campus that's hosting it for worship. So on July 4th, Potterville will host worship and they'll do it in two ways, 9:30 a.m. online and 11:00 a.m. outside. You want to add anything to how that works or?
So for each campus, so like when Potterville hosts, the service will originate from the Potterville YouTube page. And then it will get shared to the Sycamore Creek Lansing YouTube page.
Do you mean Facebook page?
Facebook page. Yes, thank you. So that all the comments and everything are all in one place. So if you go, you can go to South Lansing's Facebook page, you can go to Potterville's Facebook page to worship at 9:30, but it will all be one joint service where we'll all be together. And 11:00 a.m. outside, that'll be just like the other outdoor services that we've had where both campuses are together. Where you're welcome to bring a chair or a blanket or something to sit on in the church yard in Potterville.
So then on July 11th, South Lansing will host the service. And it'll be 9:30 only, but that's online and in person at the same time. So we have a little more resources in South Lansing when it comes to the internet. In fact, we just had fiber installed, so we have like, I don't know, like 100 download speed and 80 upload speed. So we can do the online and in person at the same time. But kind of what you're, what we're, I hope you're seeing is if you want to worship in person, you have the opportunity. If you want to worship online, we have that opportunity as well. So then back and forth on July 18th, Potterville will host it. July 25th, South Lansing will host it. On August 1st, well, in July, we're going to be doing this series that's themed with the Olympics. Anybody watching the Olympics or the trials or things coming up? I've been watching a lot of trial YouTube videos.
Katie Ledecky yesterday was amazing.
Yeah, I saw a 14-year-old swimmer. I can't remember what her name was when in the Nationals, I think. Anyway, these are, these are pretty amazing athletes. So one of the themes that we'll look at is a team in this series. And there's, that's a recognition that the team is bigger than just Sycamore Creek. So on August 1st, neither of our campuses is going to host worship. We're going to join other churches. So you'll have two options in that respect on that Sunday. 10:00 a.m. Pastor Mark will be joining United in, in Bath. He actually won't be in Bath, but you get the idea with Pastor Matt Cray. This is kind of neat because Bath has joined Potterville several times when Matt needed a vacation. And, and so Potterville campus has welcomed Bath United Methodist. They, they call it United because it's Gunnisonville United Methodist and Bath United Methodist. And they've kind of merged their ministries into a united church. And then, so you could do that at 10:00 a.m. with Pastor Mark, or you can join me at 10:00 a.m. At Two Rivers Church in South Carolina. And I, I've gotten to know this pastor Wendy Hudson, who's a church planting pastor. Their church is three years old. And they have a particular special like kind of identity and focus on LGBTQ ministry and anti-racism ministry. And I just think it's cool that, when was the last time that a church in Michigan could all go to worship with a church in South Carolina without leaving your living room? So the, on August 1st, that'll be the two options that you have to worship.
Or if you want, you can go check out some other church. You know, Tom and I regularly encourage you that it's a really great learning experience to be a guest at another church. And to experience what it's like to come into a church for the first time. And when you do that, it'll give you great insight into what it's like to come to one of our campuses for the first time as a guest. And to walk in not knowing anyone and what that feels like. You know, we really continue to want, want to be an outwardly focused church where we recognize guests and help them to feel welcome. And one of the ways we do that is by knowing what it feels like to be a guest.
Any, any questions about what's coming up in the near future? I'm not seeing or hearing anything, so we must have explained it pretty well.
Either it's totally clear or it's so unclear that no one has any questions.
This is, by the way, this is really one of the benefits of being a multi-site. I, I don't think other churches, most other churches don't have this kind of option. There are so many benefits of being a multi-site, but this is, this is one of them at this unique moment in time. I think Mark and I have been a kind of support and our campuses have supported each other in a way that most pastors don't feel that or churches, so.
And I know in Potterville, we just don't have the technology bench strength that South Lansing does. And so this past year, I have carried a lot of the weight of online worship. And I'm super grateful that coming up in July, I get a couple Sundays off where we're just able to rely on the expertise of South Lansing. I've really needed that. And I've shared that before with the church in Potterville. And so I want to thank South Lansing for hosting Potterville those two weeks and for, especially for me, for giving me a break.
I'm sure everything technologically will fall apart at South Lansing on those days now that you've said that.
Don't say that.
So we want to, we want to share with you a little bit of vision for what's happening in the fall. So in general, like our strategy or our rhythm or system in the fall is on the first Sunday in October, we always do some sort of big outreach event. And I think, you know, I was, I was wrestling with whether we were, whether people were ready for something like that. And then recently, before the mask mandates changed, I was at a Hope Farmers Market food truck night. And there were so many people there. And this was still like 95% of people were still wearing masks at that point outside. But they were there and I, this, so this is again before the mask. And I thought, you know what? I came away from that thinking people are ready for outdoor, a big outdoor event. And then the mask mandates changed and you have something like the Gizzard Fest where would you say 95, 99, 100% of people didn't have masks on?
Yes.
And so we're looking at South Lansing of, on October 3rd, hosting the South Lansing Art Festival again. We did that, we intended for that to be an annual event. And we did it in 2019 and had a great success. And then of course, 2020 hit and we didn't get to do it. So we're planning on doing that again. Mark, you want to share a little bit about what Potterville will be doing?
Yeah. So in Potterville, again, we want to do the same thing. We want to have like a grand reopening at the beginning of, of October. And for us, it'll be more of like a fall festival sort of thing. So the last time we had this, it was a pumpkin palooza. It would be something similar to that where it's a fall festival themed thing with, with options for things inside and outside throughout that day. Can I also address children's ministry?
Yeah, that's where I was going next.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
So we want to, we want to then spin everything back up to speed or kind of. So when we say grand reopening, that would include children's ministry, hospitality. But it may not include, I mean, I think probably South Lansing, we'll have to see how things go through the summer and so on. But we're probably talking about one service at South Lansing. And so there'd be one service with children's ministry and hospitality. And then this big South Lansing Art Festival.
So in Potterville, we too are going to aim for a big grand reopening at the beginning of October. I'm not sure. We, we might start moving into the building before that depending on the weather. But right now our plan is to continue to meet outdoors throughout the summer because we find that really works well for families, particularly with young children. We've had a number of families that have been coming throughout the summer and it works really well to be outside and to not have to wear masks. And to be able to worship together. So at some point though, we will move into the building as it gets colder. That's not, we can't stay outside indefinitely. And as part of that, we will, we'll launch a Kids Creek program. Now, in Potterville, we have the strength that we've had Danielle on staff throughout the whole pandemic as a children's ministry person. And so she's primarily been maintaining relationships with families throughout the pandemic. And one of the ideas she and I are exploring right now is that as we begin to move back into the building for worship, that we would have Kids Creek outside on Sundays in Potterville. To again, allow kids to have a, a space where they can be more comfortable and might not have to wear masks, those sorts of things. And we're hoping to, to begin to pilot some Kids Creek things starting in September. And then with a full launch of Kids Creek in October, where we begin meeting regularly.
Yeah. As you're saying though, that's reminding me, we were talking about children's ministry starting more like the Sunday after Labor Day weekend. So that we have a couple wraps under our belt.
Like in Lansing, you know, Potterville too, we have to like rebuild things like hospitality teams. And, you know, having people greet all these different things, like the teams have shrunk over the pandemic. And so we're going to have to rebuild things throughout September to be ready for that grand reopening in October.
So one thing that I think we might want to talk a little bit about worship, the actual worship experience or event. At South Lansing, I'm, I'm not, what I'm going to say is like thinking in pencil right now. So don't take this for gospel or written in stone, but I'm anticipating that we're going to experiment with maintaining the same basic format that we have right now. But introducing, so the challenge of it is introducing back in like a full band. And it's really hard to broadcast a full band and make it sound good in the room and for the broadcast. And usually the broadcast ends up suffering and it sounds horrible on the broadcast. If you look at like bigger churches that are doing this, they have a green room. That's a total separate room, like a production room off outside of the sanctuary. And there's a whole team of people in there who are, so there'd be like somebody in the room mixing the sound for the room. And then it's another person in the green room mixing the sound for the green room. And we just don't have those sort of resources at this point. So what we're thinking about doing is having live music with a band before we go livestream. And then we would have an intermission, a brief intermission where Kids Creek would go, kids would go up to Kids Creek. You could go get a little more coffee, go to the bathroom, come back. And then we would start the livestream service at that point. Which would be this sort of format that we've been doing, which is something. I feel like what I've wanted to call it lately is just YouTube church. At South Lansing, it's, we're just, we're just reveling and having fun in internet YouTube culture and trying to present the gospel in that format or that way. So what do you, what do you think in Potterville?
So in Potterville, like Tom mentioned in Lansing, we plan to start initially with one service in person. Our service will look similar to how it did before, but there'll be some, some changes. One of the changes we're looking at is in our in-person outdoor worship services, we've had discussion questions with opportunity for people to interact and discuss those questions during the service. That's something that we really appreciated and we plan to continue that during the worship service. We will also continue to pre-record a, a service that will be released online. And part of that pre-recording will be that Tom and I will continue to record ahead of time videos of the sermon that are then edited and, and that we release. So South Lansing will continue to use those like you have been, correct Tom? And in Potterville, we'll primarily go back to in-person preaching. But maybe once a month, we'll take advantage of the video preaching that we've been doing. Again, it's a recognition that we're going to try things out as we go. And we're doing the same thing in, in Potterville. This isn't pencil. We'll see how things go and adjust accordingly from there.
I think one thing we've noticed, especially in this may be the one week at Potterville that you use a video sermon is the conversational sermons where we hire Randy, our video editor, to come and actually film us with three cameras set up. And like the most recent one was out at Birchfield Park.
With you and me, yeah.
Yeah, you and me. Well, I guess the most recent one was me and David alone on MSU campus.
The best campus, MSU.
That format, I think is just really powerful and it's so unique that we think that that might work well at both campuses. So again, we're thinking in pencil, but any questions or thoughts about, well, we're at the point with the Q and A time. So actually what we want to do, I think, is we want to put you in breakout rooms again, just questions that you have that you want to pitch to us. So I'm going to, I'm going to put, I'm going to do a little bit smaller breakout rooms as far as people. And just give you, let's give you a four minutes in your breakout room for any questions that you might want to come back and ask me and Mark. Here we go. Yeah. So Mark asked.
About, about the groups.
Mark asked earlier about small groups and how they've done. I, I think, I think they've been kind of like everything. There've been pockets that have been doing really well with it and then others that haven't been us doing as well. Sarah, my, my wife is doing an online group right now. And it's looking at, thinking about policing from the Christian peace tradition perspective of Anabaptists and Semenites and Quakers. They put out a new curriculum about that and they're, they're a traditional non-violent peace pacifist Christian tradition. And she has 20 people in this group from both campuses, from other churches, even from other cities. So I know you have had like some really powerful, like experiencing God and the spiritual formation group and.
Yeah, I've led groups throughout the whole pandemic that have been, gone really well. And they've typically averaged like eight to 10 people in each of those groups. I, I think like Tom mentioned, group, we had a decline in groups last year during the summer, pretty usually have. We had a little bit of a rebound in the fall. We had even more small groups and more people involved in small groups this spring. And then now this summer, I would say we're close to back to normal in terms of how many groups we're offering and what sort of small group participation we have. And part of that is a recognition that during the summer, people aren't in small groups as much because there's so much other stuff going on throughout the summer.
There've been a couple of things, small group Eys that have been better online than I think they were in person. One of those I'd say was the marriage retreat that we did. We had so many couples say that it was stronger online. And, and in part because you were in the comfort of your own home. When you were asked questions, you turn your zoom off and you didn't have to worry about being overheard. Or, you know, like if we were meeting in the church for that, you, you might've worried about like talking, you know, can I talk about this and tear up or cry or whatever, or will people overhear what we're talking about? And that format was so strong. I also led some spiritual retreats with, I'm, I'm trying to remember how many were in the marriage retreat where they're like.
We had 20.
20, 20 couples.
Wow, that's good.
I did a spiritual retreat on anxiety. It's opportunity for spiritual growth and I had 12 people. And that also was really powerful. So I think you're going to see us continue to offer stuff online. And when you can choose between a small group that's in person or one that's online. I think that'll be, the online will be especially more compelling because you're not forced to only do that.
Some of the groups that I've led, we've been able to have people from Charlotte, Okemos, St. John's, Lansing, all over the area, Potterville, be able to get together for a small group. And that'd be really hard to do in person. And so one of the things I think small group leaders have picked up throughout the pandemic is some people are pretty good at leading a small group online and will be able to have that option in the future.
You want to answer Karen's question?
Yes. Karen asked a question about, you know, this was Potterville going to have nursery and worship in the sanctuary. And yes, so Karen, when we do that grand reopening in the fall, that will be worship in the sanctuary. We're exploring right now, who would be interested in being in the nursery? So for example, we've had a nursery person in the past in Potterville. And we're going back to that person to see if they're interested in being in the nursery. We're also exploring with like daycares in the Potterville area, what safety procedures they have in place. And we're also going to be sending out a survey soon to families across Sycamore Creek to just see what the comfort level is with different options that we might offer to help us as we explore what we might do.
Oh, good.
It's making me think as well, at, at South Lansing, we're remodeling the Kids Creek area and that's supposed to be done sometime in August. Super excited about that. We are, we dropped our Kids Creek staff at South Lansing. Carol was doing that, but we originally, but we shifted her job. We are getting ready to hire some new assistants for Kids Creek. So watch for that. Gretchen, I think you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just thought instead of interrupting, I would just say. I was in a group with Sam this time and he and I were talking about the fact that like we didn't really have any questions. We just really appreciate the way, the direction that we're moving. Cause we like, both of us were like, we miss people. We want to be in person. We want to see everybody. But also it is nice to have the option of watching the service anytime during the week. Cause you know, sports happen and people end up having to work or we're going on vacation and we want to hear the next one in the series or whatever. Where we think that's really, really good to have that option. And we also said that we appreciated that you said it was written in pencil because it's like, if we try it and it doesn't go the way we want, then we know that we're, we could try something else. And I think setting that expectation for everybody makes trying something else easier. Or like, oh, that didn't work. Let's try this. Everybody will know what to, like know that that was something we talked about.
I think when we say we're curious, creative, compassionate, the creative side is that we experiment. And sometimes we succeed and sometimes we fail with experiments. And, and Sycamore Creek is a permission giving culture. That's one of the beautiful things about being the pastor of Sycamore Creek is permission to try something new and to fail at it and to not get penalized for trying something new again. So we, we experiment, sometimes we succeed, sometimes we fail, but we keep, we, I've heard it said, you fail fast forward. So that we eventually get it done.
This past year has taught all of us to make plans in pencil.
I had a question, Mark. I wasn't understanding how you were talking about how we're going forward in the fall. Is that like one week is going to be online and the other three weeks are in person? Okay.
Every single week will be in person.
Okay.
Every single week there'll be like a live music and band. Occasionally the sermon in the sanctuary will be a video sermon.
Oh, okay. A pre-recorded thing. Okay. Got it. I wasn't understanding. Okay. Thank you.
And then also each week you'll have a pre-recorded service online.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that part. Good.
We're going to do that eventually. Eventually in Potterville, we may like, we may livestream our service in some way. But we're going to initially start pre-recorded and then we'll explore that live streaming it.
When Potterville gets fiber network.
Yeah, it's coming soon.
You never know, like it just, it just finally like, it was like a two months ago that it finally came to our South Lansing campus. And Thomas Hoss was jumped all over that.
Yeah. Um, what was the other question? Oh, Team Fuel. Are we just going to start it up at your house or at South Lansing? Or what are, kind of what are those plans? And is Potterville going to have Team Fuel in person at the church?
That's a really good question. This, this is like really in pencil.
The light pencil, not a dark pencil.
One, one of the things that was really cool here is to just see how strong the Potterville youth group is. And so we, we felt like to really build on that strength, Potterville needed the freedom to meet in Potterville. So we're, we're going to, we're going to do separate things this fall. And allow Potterville to really build on the momentum that's there. South Lansing then doesn't have quite as much momentum. And I need to pull together the parents. Right now there's, there's almost no high schoolers at this point from South Lansing. You know, we did have one family, Karen, you'll remember, but they didn't come very often and they're moving. So, yeah, the dad's in the army and he's gotten transferred. So I, I need to pull together the middle school families in South Lansing because there are, there's a handful of middle school families. And I'm leaning towards then doing something on Sunday morning with middle schoolers. And I don't really know what yet. But then we would also have the occasional intersection where maybe we're doing a special event where they're, both campuses are together or a special retreat or something like that. So. But that's really kind of, I think ultimately a strategic move, particularly for Potterville to build on that momentum and give them the freedom to go stronger and faster by keeping it even closer to home.
So, so in Potterville, we will have the middle school group meeting starting in the fall. I will continue to lead that middle school group. And then I have a leader recruited for the high school group. I'm not sure if it's like set in stone and I can announce that leader yet. But I have a leader in place who's interested in leading the high school group. Both groups will meet in Potterville on Sunday nights. And the high school group will meet separately from the middle school group, but they'll both be there for that. And we do have some momentum in Potterville around the middle school and high school ministry. And I'm very excited about continuing to expand that. I think you know, over the pandemic, our high school group, we have a nice solid core of kids. And we haven't had enough kids in Potterville in a while to do a high school group. And we're finally getting to the point where, where we have enough where we can do a high school group on our own.
Sari is mentioning that Anne is excited and that it's worth saying, is it August 1st? Is that when we were going to?
Yes.
On August 1st, we're going to do a, some kind of event with everybody. And include, welcome the fifth graders that are now sixth graders to join us on that day. So if, if Anne is around on August 1st, put that on your calendar. And we will, we'll be introducing the new sixth graders. Marian, you got your hand up? Marian, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um, I was going to put this in the I was going to put this in the chat, but I couldn't find the send button. Mine is basically just an overall general apprehension about how this is going to go. It's, I don't have a particular question. It's just like, I don't know, man, you know, I'm just, I'm just kind of putting it out there that I'm a bit on the apprehensive side about how all this is going to go. Especially, you know, from a musical standpoint. I mean, yeah, we've got to do something different, but I'm, I don't know if this is going to work or not. I'm just a little squeamish and apprehensive, but I'll be all right.
Welcome to the club, Marian. I think I feel that way too.
That's what I was thinking. I think we all feel a little apprehensive.
Yes. All right, Marian, are you talking specifically about the idea of having like 20 minutes of live music and then intermission and then a livestream?
Well, part of it is that and then part of it is like, okay, so there, we're, we're playing live music, but we're, it's not being streamed and that it feels like it defeats the purpose of outreach to me. But then again, to me, music is everything, so I'm sure I'm wrong there. It just, it feels like we're, we're missing something. We're, I don't know. I don't know.
Gretchen agrees with you that music is life.
I think the way you envisioned it, Tom, right, is that the, there would be music during the streamed portion of the worship service. It just won't be like whole band.
Yeah, there might be one song that, but it would be like one person with one instrument or a track of some sort. Or a pre-recorded music video. I think what it is, Marian, is it's, it's a little more like a YouTube channel or a YouTube show. And that a lot of YouTube shows, they're, they're really not built around like a band playing music and so on. So if, if you want the music experience, you'll come and be in person. If you want that full thing, and if you don't, then it's more like, it's, the, the music would be like an introduction to the in the live set to the internet show that then starts 30 minutes later. One, one, one model I'm kind of taking this from is actually or that idea from is Bryce. What's Bryce's last name in Hastings? Fininger? It's, it's Green, Green Street United Methodist Church in, in Hastings. And he's been doing for several years now, this module or worship where instead of having a contemporary service and traditional service, they have the praise, the word and the table. And each of those segments of worship are 30 minutes long. The praise is the first 30 minutes where it's praise music. The word is 30, the middle 30 minutes, which is a sermon, and the table is 30 minutes of liturgy, traditional and communion. So if you are traditional oriented, you would come for the word and the table. And if you were contemporary oriented, you would come for the praise and the word. And if you're a junkie, you would come for the praise, the word and the table. And he's had a lot of success at Green Street with that model. So this is a little bit along those lines, not in three parts, but the first part being the music and then the second part being like the internet show. But again, we'll experiment and it's one of the fun things about Sigmar Creek, we try new things. We've done something totally different than any other church has done at South Lansing. In fact, that's part of why we're going to Wendy's Church in South Carolina is it's the closest to anything I've seen online anywhere to what we're doing in South Lansing. So there are two churches doing something like what we're doing. I mean, I've looked all over the place for it.
I'm sure I'll warm up to it eventually. I was a little scared about opening up the cafe too, like I was more scared about who would want to try and help me navigate, but even that turned out to be a moot point and, you know, I warmed up to that too. So I may be okay. I'm just freaking out.
Yeah. Well, I am too, a little bit, Marian. All right. Well, hey, uh, we're gonna kind of bring it to a close here, but we wanted to just tell you about what else is coming up, kind of over a longer period, just look at the church calendar here. We're currently in this series in June, Ancient Rivalries, Augustine versus All the Heretics. I don't know whether you all are having fun, but Mark and I are having a lot of fun. Of course, we just had graduation Sunday. Next Tuesday, we have a key leaders meeting and we are going to do that in person or online. We're going to do both at the same time. So if you're a key leader, be sure, I, I sent out an email earlier today about that. June 27th baptism at Waldemar. We are stoked because we have, we have a fair amount of people who want to be baptized.
Yes.
You may be wondering, is there like, are we going to walk down to the river or something to baptize? No, we're not. Are you going to get that thing or?
I think so, yeah.
We're, we're getting a big horse trough. Like a stainless steel horse trough.
Yeah.
That we were going to go with these little water troughs that they have there, but somebody that Mark is baptizing wants to be wetter than that. So we're getting a big horse trough that you could literally, Mark could actually lay down in it. You'd have to fill it back up after that, but anyway, we're baptizing babies, we're baptizing adults, we're bat, we're reaffirming people. It's, it's, we're super excited.
Yes, from both campuses too.
Yeah. In July, we're doing this series called The Games. It's Olympics theme again, and we already talked about kind of the schedule that August 4th, we're joining other churches. After that, the next week will be August 8th, we're starting a four-week series called What Would Jesus Say? And looking at what would Jesus say to our divided nation about mental health, global warming and diversity and inclusion. It's an Adam Hamilton series from Church to the Res. And of course, October 3rd, we already talked about a grand reopening. I should have on here, our, our churchwide small group campaign this fall is going to be a book called Unafraid, also by Adam Hamilton. You want to say about how, we, we, we came across this book in two totally different ways. But you want to say how you first heard about it?
So each year we have a planning meeting and we come with a book we're going to recommend for our fall study. And Tom found this book, Unafraid. It's, it's how to live in, with hope in uncertain times, which I think is just a great message, especially right now.
It's so good.
I came with the same book because in Potterville, one of our small groups, the Bible Babes, read this book. And Rosemary, who's part of the, who leads the Bible Babes, she came to me with a copy of the book and she said, Mark, we bought you a copy of this book. We want you to have it because we think it's so good and we found it so useful. And the Bible Babes led the way and we were like, this is totally a good book and we're really excited about digging into it this fall. It's going to be really good sermon series and a really good study.
So when, when the Bible Babes and, and South Lansing intersect, you know, it's going to be awesome.
God's at work. Yeah.
Yeah.
Take the things that you bring to us, like the, by the way, the, the article that we're having the key leaders read is one that Sandy Sanders brought to Mark's attention. So you, you all are also part of what's leading the church. All right, we've come to the end of, of the meeting and as, as we like to say, nothing's over until we debrief on it. So you're welcome to type in the comments or, or unmute yourself and we always again start with celebration. What, what went well in our meeting tonight?
I like the breakout sessions.
Yeah, those were cool.
Yeah, I was going to say that because I felt like I got to talk to people that I don't always get to talk to.
And then I like the information. I mean, the direction really helps. I'm not a huge planner, but I do like to know what's coming up and how we're transitioning back into meeting in person and that kind of thing. So it was very helpful to me.
I don't think I ever got Zoom fatigued, so my thing is I like to be able to see y'all's faces. So Zoom works for me because I can still see people's faces. So yay, Zoom.
Is there an irony of you saying that without actually having your video on?
I only did that because I couldn't hold it at the right angle. Yeah, there is irony. You're right. I didn't want to have like triple chin in the video.
Not like I can see it. I look fine.
I'll turn it on.
I was going to say, I can't worry about that anymore. I'd never have it on.
It's that point. We've all done this too much, Gretchen. It's all good. As long as you're not naked changing. I had that happen in a staff meeting. We had a teacher that saw what it could in a staff meeting. Oops.
Yeah, no.
I've seen so many stories, people going to the bathroom on a Zoom meeting, people doing other intimate things on a Zoom meeting that they should not be doing.
You can keep sharing things that went well, but was there anything that needed improvement, was missing or confusing from our meeting tonight?
I wish there was more people. I say it at every meeting though.
I know you're going to say that every time, Gretchen.
I'm legit going to say that every time, although I will say that something that went well is that I've watched or listening to the meeting at David and Stars. So I'm basically forcing them to be at this meeting by doing it while they're, while I'm here.
Against my will.
Against David's will.
Now, speaking, speaking to that, I didn't see a reminder email about this meeting. So that may have been helpful to get more people here.
I got one, but I don't know.
Was it yesterday or?
Or even a Facebook post in an hour, we're doing a meeting or something because life is chaotic.
Where is the send button in the chat panel on a Mac?
I just entered, so I don't know.
Yeah, just enter.
If it's a Mac, it's probably something crazy like option E.
Anything else, folks?
No, not for me.
All right. Well, Mark, you want to pray and we'll wrap it up?
Sounds good. Let's pray. God, I thank you that we could gather tonight and talk about the future of our church, even if that future right now is in pencil. We pray, God, that we would move forward with you, that we would try things out and hold them loosely as we've been doing throughout this past year. But, but also be excited about the direction our church is headed, excited about gathering again in person. Excited about the options that are before us and excited to move forward into this future together as a church, living out your mission, sharing your love with each other and with the people around us who desperately need to hear about it. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
All right, my apologies. My wife just showed me the reminder email. I glossed right over, it was like step two, there were three things, right? I looked at one and three and, okay.
Just three things, Mark. This group only has three things. All right. Well, hey, we'll see you all sometime very soon, probably.
Yes.
Bye, everyone.